Introduce our candidates this evening in the order in which they appear at the table. We have Rema Sarone, Mohammed Hafiz, Damani Farley, and Marion Porterfield. We will begin with Rema. Your opening statement, please.
I would like to start out by thanking the Schenectady County's League of Women Voters and the American Association of University Women for inviting me to this event. There are some great things going on in Schenectady. There are blighted buildings designated to be demolished, city parks are getting updated, and due to the river's casino, the river's edges looking wonderful, to name a few. However, as I have been walking through the neighborhoods, I have discovered there are so many neighborhoods that have been neglected. Schenectady County had the state's highest per capita crime rate in 2016, with the city of Schenectady as the driving force behind the county's number one slot. Property values have decreased, yet property taxes have not changed. Drug addiction is on the rise, which affects our quality of life on many levels. I am a concerned citizen who cares about our community and wants to get involved to protect and improve the quality of life in our city, keep our neighborhoods safe, and lower our taxes. I have learned to love this city, and now is the time for me to step up and do more. I have worked for Albany County Airport Authority's office for 20-plus years as budget and performance manager, and I am heavily involved in the community through Schenectady Neighborhood Watch, Schenectady Neighborhood Association, and Team Schenectady. I am also public relations and state treasurer, treasury manager for American bikers aimed towards education of New York, and treasurer for my local chapter. I am very active with our veterans and attend many events such as fundraisers, honor flights to Washington, and Stars for our troops. With my work experience and life experiences, I can make a positive change.
Thank you. Mr. Hafiz.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to first thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. My name is Mohammed Hafiz, and I'm running for Schenectady City Council. I lived in Schenectady for over 14 years. And I own several properties in the city, and I have my own insurance business. I was the president of the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association for two years, during which time the association received two awards from the Schenectady City Council for programs that I have implemented with the help of many volunteers. I have two master's degrees from Stony Brook University on Long Island and San Johns University in Queens, New York, majoring in mathematics and management science. I'm running for city council because I believe that city residents are being unfairly treated by this council, the current council, and by the current administration. I'm not a politician. I simply care about the city, and I want to protect and improve our quality of life. I'm advocating in this campaign for fairness to our neighborhoods and residents. So please, help me get elected to city council so I can begin helping our city residents and neighborhoods to get their fair share of funds and quality services from the city in order to achieve a better future for Schenectady. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Damani Farley.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having this candidate forum and allowing us to get to know each other a little better and express our gratitude and our vision for our great city moving forward. My name is Damani Farley. I'm a lifelong Schenectady resident. I have worked with a lot of our surrounding 501(c)(3)'s. I've worked with Schenectady Community College, Schenectady City School District, and a lot of our 501(c)(3)'s around youth service. I've been in the last 15 years of my life, I've worked in human services right here in Schenectady. I talk about that work because that gave me a very unique perspective and a way to kind of see our city when it's at its best and our city's residents when they are struggling in their worst possible predicaments. I think that it's really important that I start by saying I'm definitely not a politician. However, I have a lot of experience working in communities. I've been a community organizer for some years here in Schenectady and have won several awards, being honored by our city council. I chair our Southern Christian Leadership Council on the National Youth Board. And these are all these experiences that I do. This is not what I do, it's more about who I am. As we get to know each other more through the night, and I look forward to answering your questions, I hope that the one theme that reoccurs in your head is that I'm here to make plans with the citizens of Schenectady and not for them. And I think that's what's happening right now, and that speaks to some of the quality of life issues that we're suffering from in our great city. Thank you.
Thank you. And Marion Porterfield.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Marion Porterfield, and I also want to thank the League of Women Voters and the American Association of University Women for holding this forum and for inviting me to participate. I'm currently a member of the city council, and I've been on the city council since 2012, being elected in 2012 as in a special election, and then elected again in 2013 for the term that I'm currently serving. I came to the council actually from a community activist background. I guess I have to say, maybe some people say I'm a politician, but I didn't start as that. I started because I spent a lot of time going to the city council meetings and realizing that there were a lot of things that needed to happen in the community, but there was no one on the other side who was really voicing that, which is why I, after working through committees and all of that, so I could learn the process, I then ran for city council because I saw the need for the community voice on the council. And even after joining the council, I still continue to attend public meetings and to go to many events throughout the city because I think it's very important that even as a council member, you stay in touch with the residents of the city. Since being on the council, I've worked on a number of things. Currently, I'm the chair of Health and Recreation, and one of the things that we've worked on with the Recreation Advisory Commission through the county is putting in new equipment in most of the city parks. You'll see that there's work being going on at the A Diamond now, and we continue to do that to revive our parks so that our young people have a place to go. We were able to instate the affirmative action manager to make sure that women, minorities, and Section 3 low-income workers had an opportunity for employment in our city. And also, we've been able to open some affordable housing in the neighborhoods that needed most. Joseph Allen Apartments are going to be opening on the 5th of October. And also, I feel like I've been able to help people understand better how the city works. And we would always like things to work in the way that maybe we understand them or would like them to be, but I think that one of the things we've been able to do is to compromise and work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone's vibrating, I think. Now to our first question, and we'll start with Ms. Sarone at this end of the table. If the sales tax agreement is reopened, what would be your position with regard to revenue sharing and other details for the city? Do you know about the particulars of the agreement? Let's start with Ms. Sarone.
I don't know 100% all the particulars on that agreement, but from what I do know, I realize that the city of Schenectady and probably a few of the surrounding towns don't get their fair share of the actual revenue from the sales tax. I would have to read the full contract to actually give you a good answer, to be honest.
Thank you.
Do I have 30 seconds? I will say this, part of what I do at work as budget and performance managers, I do read contracts, and I can tell the performance on what that contract is going to give to the city and how it should actually be allocated correctly. Thank you. I'm done.
Mr. Hafiz.
Yes, I too don't know the specifics of the agreement, but what I heard at the time is that Schenectady, the city of Schenectady... Oh, I'm sorry. As I said, I too don't know much about the details of the sales agreement, but at the time, that happened several years ago, from what I recall. And from what I remember, the sales tax agreement was not really fair to the city of Schenectady. And if we renegotiate that or open the agreement for negotiation, city of Schenectady deserves a lot more than what its chair that's getting right now. I guess I have no additional comments. Thank you.
Mr. Farley.
Thank you. So first, I'd like to say, without knowing all the nuances of the contract, the current contract, what I do know is that Schenectady being that is growing, and we have a growing economy. What we have to do is, in looking at said contracts and negotiations, we have to look at the shared accountability and make sure that it's proportionate to the revenue and the sale tax that is produced here in Schenectady. So I know right now, when we look at our property taxes and how we're assessed at 120%, if that's any inclination to what the formulas are going to look like moving forward, Schenectady is an economic driver in Schenectady County. However, I don't believe that the agreements that are in place right now really represent are proportionate for our contribution into our accounting agreement. Thank you.
Ms. Porterfield.
So I was on the council when this agreement was entered into, and I know there was a lot of concern by our budget analysts at the time that the county, the city wasn't making the best agreement with the county. And he brought forward some facts and figures, but there were two sides to the story. Unfortunately, what he brought forward came at the 11th hour, we had the point where we made the decision, and there certainly was an improvement in the revenue that the city did get over what they'd gotten in past years. So if your question is, what would it look like today? Well, certainly I'd have to be presented with the facts as they currently are, but with the facts that were given at the time, we got a much better agreement than we had in years past.
Thank you. The next question is, please explain steps the city can take to reduce the crime rate. And we will start with Mr. Hafiz.
For years, I've been advocating for a fair share of funds for each Schenectady neighborhood, and especially in Mount Pleasant, I was closely connected with the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association. And we all know that Crane Street was not giving the funds or the attention it should be given. We always asked for a satellite police station on Crane Street, which they used to have. I would actually advocate strongly for having a satellite station in any neighborhood that needs it, especially Mount Pleasant and Hamilton Hill.
Mr. Farley.
So as far as it goes to crime reduction, I think that the high crime rate we see in Schenectady is often a byproduct of the disproportionate, really, need for some true economic justice within our city. That's why the heart of your city always is going to start with your neighborhoods. We have a very transient population. We have our fair share of absentee landlord and abandoned properties, which really are the setting conditions for these high crime situations that we have now. So when we talk about addressing crime, we have to be pragmatic and really start at the root cause. And the root cause is that we have unsafe neighborhoods. So if you want to invest in our neighborhoods, then ultimately you will see the crime rate decline and provide opportunity for homeownership. And nationwide research will tell you that high owner occupancy neighborhoods have the lowest rate of crimes. I'm sorry for going. Thank you for that.
Ms. Porterfield.
Yes, and I have to agree with Mr. Farley that homeownership certainly is a great crime reducer. Additionally, we really have to, I believe, address the quality of life issues in our city. And smaller things happen, and if we allow them to just continue to happen, then that just grows and grows. So we really, I believe, need to address the quality of life issue in our city and give people more respect for our city as residents, as well as people that come here to visit. Because people that come to visit kind of choose to treat our city the way that we treat it. So I think quality of life is extremely important. I also believe that a relationship between our community and our law enforcement is important, and it does happen on a regular basis in different environments and different kind of activities that happen. But I think those are the kinds of things that lead towards crime reduction. It's been an example that's happened in other cities, and it's something that I believe we can use here. The quality of life is a place that we really, really should start.
Thank you. The next question is, please tell us...
Oh, sorry. My attempt to juggle things has confused myself. Thank you for catching me. Well, obviously, I'm an advocate for Schenectady Neighborhood Watch, and I believe that we need to inform our neighborhoods on how to take care of themselves better, how to report incidences. And I also agree with Marion Porterfield that our quality of life needs to be improved to take care of all those circumstances, such as when I go door to door, I hear people complaining about parking, and they create havoc, and there's, I don't know, there's a lot of problems with drugs. And I think I'm done.
Thank you. All right, now, on to the next question. Please tell us about your experience with advocating for children in poverty, as well as diverse communities with majority of African-American residents who reside in depressed neighborhoods. And I think Mr. Farley is next to answer the question first.
Okay. So again, when we talk about the issues of advocating for children, that is not something I do, but that's who I am. I've done and worked in that capacity professionally, personally, and have volunteered countless hours of my time. I come from a family, a long line of advocates, and especially youth advocates. You know, when we talk about our neighborhoods being the backbone of our communities, the people who are most vulnerable and who are most at risk when we are not being mindful in the decisions we make are our children. So I'm somebody who has advocated strongly. I was a part of the Fair Equity and Education Initiative in Schenectady. Besides that, I was the director of Schenectady Youth Programs, such as Youth Build, Schenectady Boys' Day Out, Community Home Integration Program. I also sit on the board for the juvenile justice, regional juvenile justice reform. So my time is up. Thank you. You did my resume here.
In terms of advocating for children in our community, it's something that I've done for a long time. I mean, many years ago, I was a girl scout leader because I feel that there's certain things that if children have in their life in terms of structure, that's very helpful. Currently, I serve as a muse in the schools as part of the girls' circle, which means that adults, women, go into the schools and meet with girls to try to help them better understand how things are in life, to give them some direction, to give them some role models. So those are the kind of things I do. I often speak to youth groups just to give them an understanding of what their city is about, and also that there's opportunities for them to participate regardless of how young they are. In my community, I am a member of the Hamilton Hill Neighborhood Association, so we're consistently doing things out in the community and attending different events that work with youth and that support them. And also, I was a part of the fight for fiscal equity and going to the Capitol to talk to the leaders there to try to make sure that our school system got the amount of money that it needed in order for our children to get the best education possible. Thank you.
Ms. Sarone.
I have been involved with children well. I have two of my own. I was a single mom. I had to raise them. I opted not to raise them alone and became Sunday School teacher, Sunday School administrator. I did a lot of stuff with the youth group. It brought them around. I integrated children through battered women's and helped supervise them. I think it's very important for children to be part of the community and have a sense of family regardless of who you are or... Children are very... As a single mom, I had a rough time, and I can relate with most single parents raising their own children and having to do it all. Thank you.
Mr. Hafiz.
Yes, I was involved with the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association, and we met at the church on Crane Street. And we advocated for years for the summer lunch programs that the church offered and many other locations. We supported that strongly to keep the kids in any summer program, in addition to having, you know, supported also after-school programs. And also, I'm advocating for programs that assist property owners, you know, to stay with their homes. With the high taxes they're paying right now, property owners need additional help to prevent foreclosure or losing their homes, and if they do that, you know, kids suffer in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify for those of you who are sending up questions as we go through the program, your questions do go to the bottom of the stack, and I'm starting with the questions that were presented in the beginning. You look as cold as I am. Next question is, what are your thoughts about an area where real estate values are so low and land speculation is so high? And we will start with Ms. Porterfield.
So could you repeat the question?
I can repeat that, yes. What are your thoughts about an area where real estate values are so low and land speculation is so high?
Well, what are my thoughts about that? Well, it doesn't sound like a good formula, that real estate values are so low and land speculation is so high. The question doesn't ask, what would you do? So I'm not really sure of what they're looking for there, so...
What we can do is send the question back to the person who asked it for clarification. Can we do that?
No, I just understand that she said...
I guess the concern is that the land values are low and are speculators coming in flipping properties. I don't know. I don't know what's happening.
It wasn't my question, but just in general, are we able to expound on that if we know it's our question or not?
If there is total confusion, the lady behind you, yes?
It's my question. It's a question. It's a question. It's about property because it is so low. And then we have been taking those properties, and on the other hand, we have land speculation so high. We're expecting more, and the numbers are actually reducing, and we don't know if it has done this thing. It's connected. This is the New York Times on Thursday, and this passed back to today for yesterday. The numbers are not coming in. There is still a big call for us, and it's a bit of a plan in there.
So let me just... I'm not sure that I agree necessarily that the real estate value is so low. Schenectady is selling a lot of houses. There was a time when we were selling them for a lot less, but the housing costs have gone up, and there are people buying more homes here in Schenectady. And in addition to that, we do have things in place so that when people buy them, they have to stay here, they're only for a certain amount of time, they can't just flip the property and then flip it onto something else. So I have to say that I don't necessarily agree that our real estate value is very low. It has certainly increased over the years. There was a time when it was much lower, but the real estate value has increased in Schenectady.
Ms. Sarone.
I must have skipped my street. My real estate value has not increased. It has increased because there are vacant houses on my street. I don't really know the full on how you would about to change that, but I do have three vacant houses on my street. The one there that was sold across the street, they were selling for, I think, $39,000. So I don't think that makes my property value go up any higher. What I do about that, I'm not sure yet. I would have to do a lot of reading and a lot of research to come up with some kind of solution to that problem.
Thank you.
Okay. The way I understand the question is that, you know, real estate values in Schenectady are low, and how to address that, if that's there. Okay, she's nodding, so we're on the same page here. Well, the real estate value in Schenectady, the way I see it, is low at this point for several reasons. You know, we have a lot of landlords, and not necessarily out-of-town landlords, but the strategy with the city right now is basically to hound these landlords because they're not doing a good job with their tenant, selecting tenant and all this. Some of my proposal is to basically, instead of handing this landlord or property owner in general, is to support these landlords, whatever program. I read a couple of days ago, there's a program, you know, by the county to support homeowners with additional funds if they need it, so they can stay at their homes. I think we should have programs like this for rental properties as well, because when you keep handing the landlord with the extra taxes, with the extra taxes and high taxes, well, it's a topic dear to my heart, so maybe we'll hit it some other question.
Thank you. Mr. Farley.
So again, I think that this is, when you talk about low property values in Schenectady, that's a result of extremely high taxes. So when people aren't looking to purchase homes in the area, obviously, property values go down. You have these blighted properties in Schenectady as well. But right now, what we really need to do is really not what happens to you, but how you react to it. So really, we need to be solution-based in our thinking and look at somebody's low property values as a way to invest in families and recreate the neighborhoods and rebuild the neighborhoods of Schenectady. So therefore, our property values will increase and stabilize, and we can see our taxes going down. This really isn't rocket science, and it's happening all over our nation right now. And as Schenectady, we are in a very unique position with this great economic boom that we are seeing. If we are intentional about how we invest in our neighborhoods, what we will end up happening is that we'll have people who have jobs, who live here, buy homes here, and stay here.
Thank you. What is your opinion on sanctuary cities? Should we, Schenectady City, be a sanctuary city? This is an easy question. Yes or no? And we will start with Ms. Sarone.
Is it yes or no with no explanation?
It just says, should we be a sanctuary city, yes or no? But you do have a minute, so...
I really don't have an answer to that. I would have to say that it depends on how it would affect our taxpayers right now. Can we afford to be in a sanctuary city? I am not sure. I'm not a not-welcoming person, but can city of Schenectady actually afford for us to be a sanctuary city? That's my answer.
Thank you. Mr. Hafiz.
Well, I think that this question is better decided by perhaps the residents of Schenectady, so maybe we'll bring it up to a vote, because it's an emotional question. The city basically refused to, or the city council, the current city council, refused to vote for Schenectady to be sanctuary city primarily because of the fear of losing federal If that's the only reason, maybe they should bring it up to the people of Schenectady and have them decide whether Schenectady should be sanctuary city or not. However, it has to be done within the limits of the law and not providing any illegality in it. Thank you.
Mr. Farley?
Okay, so initially, I wasn't sure about that. I was thinking, you know, I understand the ideology behind being a sanctuary city. And I leaned that way, but I was concerned about the financial impact that it can have to the city residents. And I was thinking that, and it might be a good idea, but where does that fall on our list of priorities, right? And as I had started to gain greater understanding of that, what it means to be a sanctuary city and the fact that there are limited things that the federal government are allowed to do to impose on you as a city, I think we have to ask ourselves a question that we cannot afford to compromise our morals for a couple of dollars. Because what does that say about us as people? So my answer is yes.
Ms. Porterfield?
Yes, thank you. So this came before the council, and there was obviously some pushback. And as Mr. Hafiz says, the council did not pass it. I, in fact, introduced legislation to call... People seem to have a difficulty with the term sanctuary city. So I introduced legislation to call it a welcoming city, which basically means that people who live here already and are contributing to our society and, you know, just doing all the things, being good neighbors and all of that, will remain and not be under the fear of being turned in to the law enforcement, to the federal government by our local police. And that probably was a sticking point for most people. And the governor, you know, even people were concerned about that. But the governor said that we could not be penalized for not turning people in to ICE. So my legislation, the legislation that we put forth did not pass, but I would certainly support that and make sure that our citizens who currently live here are safe and cared for just like the rest of us are. Thank you.
Our next question is, how can the city government and the school district do a better job to work together? And we will start with Mr. Hafiz. Again, the question is, how can the city government and the school district do a better job to work together?
I think the city should... The city provides a lot of funds to different programs that also affects the children in the city. And it's a little difficult to determine at this point, you know, what kind of measures that we should come up with to make, you know, two different entities work together. However, they should support, the city should support programs like, you know, after-school programs and the lunch program in the summer. And if they have additional funds, they should, you know, provide it to the school system because they are underfunded right now. And then additional funds will probably help the school district, you know, support other programs that they have.
Thank you. Mr. Farley?
Okay, so this is obviously something that's very near and dear to my heart. We have to, as leaders in the community, we have to kind of do away with the thought that the school district, the school system, is separate from us, okay? I believe that the number-one way that community schools is the way. The community school model is a well-researched model that creates a community hub within the school. Our council, right now, what we do, what they do... I'm getting ahead of myself there. What they do is that, you know, they help with the allocation of funding. And I think one very simple way we can do that is to say that if we're going to allocate funds for a local nonprofit, how we can score them and we can give them extra credit if they're willing to set up like a satellite office, a service delivery within the school district. That's one way, and very impactful way. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Porterfield?
I believe that the city could try to help the school district make sure they get more funding because right now, the city has to make the school district whole if the taxes aren't paid. So with the city advocating on behalf of the school district, as I stated earlier, we actually went to the Capitol to advocate. But for the city to help advocate to see that more funding comes in so that the school district has the funds that it needs. And that would ultimately end up in lower taxes for everyone if we could get the school taxes, which make up a large portion of the tax bill. If we were able to get those school taxes, the place where we get the funding that we need, so that would diminish the taxes for residents as well as not having the city having to make the school district whole. And so the city, again, should advocate on behalf of that to try, always possible, to look for grants, to do what's necessary to make sure that the school district helps get the funding that it needs.
Thank you. Ms. Rone?
I would have to say that each community and school district within our city has a little bit of different needs, one from the other, from what I've seen walking from house to house and asking people what they want to change or what's different. I would think that we need to communicate better with the school district to find out what those actual needs are. And I agree that we need to get a higher percentage of what the revenues from taxes are due to us from the state to assist our school districts to be, have better programs and so forth for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we'll be starting with Mr. Farley. This has to do with job creation. What kinds of strategies would you implement to increase sustainable employment in low-income communities?
So first, we need to talk about true community engagement. Right now, in some of our lower-income communities, right here in the city of Schenectady, a real thing that happens day in and day out with all of these buildings being built. And, you know, that means job creation. What's happening is that young men and women are walking past... When young women, young men and women that live in the city of Schenectady are walking past people right by them that don't live in Schenectady, that don't spend money here in Schenectady, but are gainfully employed, and they're walking by them on their way to a food pantry or a social service building. That's just an atrocity. So what we need to do is we need to incentivize our builders and people who want to come here and do business. We need to keep incentives high for them to come here. But also, we have to say, look, there's going to have to be some accountability about a real investment that happens. So when you come here, if you work, if you build here, you hire people that work here. So when you think about buildings like the Joseph Allen Building, I'll stop there.
Thank you. Ms. Porterfield?
Thank you.
Well, I agree with some of the things that Mr. Farley has said. And that's why, one of the reasons that I advocated very strongly for getting a full-time affirmative action manager, because that's just not for women and minorities, but for Section 3, which is low-income workers, to ensure that when people come here and build, that they hire people who live here. And that's written into the contracts that they get. And so we're pushing towards writing into the contract that you make sure that you hire Section 3 workers. I'm pushing towards that. And additionally, on the other side, we also have to make sure that our workforce is prepared to do the work that's needed, whatever that work is. Whatever industry is coming into our community, to make sure that we have the programs in place and the training for people so that when the jobs hit, that we have people that can immediately go into work as opposed to the job comes and then we have to catch up and train people. So I think it's two-pronged. We have to make sure that people that come into our community are made to hire people here, but also that the people who live here are prepared to take the jobs that are available to them. Thank you.
Ms. Rone?
I agree. When new businesses come into the area, we do need to take a very good look at those contracts. We need to offer a lot of training and schooling so people can take jobs that are more than just ten dollars an hour. They're not... That's not going to feed a family. I know from past experience, from my own experience, that it wasn't easy to do better for my two children as a single parent. It requires a lot of training and a lot of self-discipline, but I didn't make it through college, and I worked two jobs. And I took care of two children. And I think we should have programs to assist these families so they can do the same thing.
Thank you. Mr. Hafiz?
Yes, I too am in favor of city requirement that each job is created at the city or obviously the county for these people to stay and work in, to live in the city of Schenectady. And we should also put a lot of emphasis on training different skills because the job market out there is tough and it requires a lot of skills. And people need training and new skills with technology. And, you know, it's available to different programs. It just needs additional funding to create more jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Think I've gone around everyone? I haven't gotten confused yet? Okay. Ms. Porterfield will be answering the next question first. What is your best skill for being on the city council?
I think that my best skill is advocating and staying connected with the community and helping my colleagues to better understand some of the things maybe that they've never... They haven't encountered, or maybe it's a group of people that they are not familiar with. I'll just put it like that. So I know for a fact that things have happened since I've been on the council that able to bring things forward that maybe there wasn't a thought, that thought would not have been there had I not been there. Since coming from a community background and being involved with the community so much, there are things that sometimes do not get brought up. But my voice being at that table to say, we really should consider this. And that changes some of the decisions that are made and how it ultimately impacts the residents of Schenectady.
Thank you. Ms. Rone?
Well, I think my best skill is by twenty-plus years in finance as budget performance manager for Almond County Airport Authority's office. I'm capable of reading grants. I am capable of balancing out the budget. I can measure performance by numbers. There is really not much to say about finance. I'm also an organizer. I have also been an organizer for certain things too in the community. I have raised money for cruises and for tots. We raised five thousand dollars just recently. I have organized a freedom rally, and we had over a thousand people for that. Those are... That's it. Those are my skills.
Mr. Hafiz?
Yes, I have, you know, a background in different fields. I do have education in the field of management science. Obviously, you get courses in finances, and I also have a degree in mathematics. So looking at the budget will be something of a second nature. I do own my own business, and I balance my budget every year. I've been in business for almost fourteen years. I own several properties in Schenectady. I'm also a landlord, and I never lost a property to the city for not paying taxes. So I'm very well-versed in balancing my budget. My background in education and experience in the corporate world, I also work in the corporate world, and I also taught in college, courses in mathematics and technology. I believe my background is very strong in that area, and I'll be, you know, an addition, a good addition to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farley?
It was about our strongest skill? I'm sorry.
Question. What is your best skill for being on the city council?
Okay, listening. Listening. I think that, you know, I too am a small business owner. I run a successful consulting business, and I consult with educational institutions and nonprofits all around the Capitol District and beyond. But I think that, so all of those skills and being a connector and bringing people together and kind of bridging gaps will lend themselves well to me if I'm fortunate enough to win a seat on Schenectady City Council. But I think the biggest skill is less complicated than all of that, and it's just listening. Our number-one responsibility as council members is to represent the people that live in Schenectady. And we don't do that if we are just focusing on what our natural skill sets are. We need to be paying attention and representing them. And I think that, so you need to know how to listen, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next question will begin with Ms. Rone. What will you do to help the opioid-addicted population of Schenectady?
Well, I am on Team Schenectady, which is our heroin task force here in Schenectady. And we've been working with Oasis and Friends of Recovery and so forth and so on. We are working with Breaking Barriers right now, because we're hoping to combine Breaking Barriers, who are addicts, with our Team Schenectady, our task force, so we can find out what their needs are to be on that road to recovery. There is no cut-and-dry answer. Everyone is in recovery at different levels, and they... No one's the same person. I think we can... We need better programs. I heard there was no women's program here in Schenectady whatsoever for housing.
Thank you, Mr. Hafiz?
I think we lack the enough... Or additional budget... We lack the full budget that we need for law enforcement in the city of Schenectady. We need, you know, as I mentioned before, we need additional cops, we need additional satellite police station. We have to hit this problem hard, and there are also problems with the home. You know, some of these problems start at home. And if poverty wanted the issues, we should really work on programs to assist families stay at their homes. Whether the rent is too high, we should have programs to help with the rent. We should have programs to assist property owners stay in their properties and not lose them to high taxes. High taxes is a major negative in the city of Schenectady that drives a lot of people to either poverty or going the other way.
Mr. Farley?
Okay, so some of the work I do in my consulting business is effective service delivery. And this issue is intertwined, I should say, under the umbrella of human service. And what we need to do first is return to humanity to human service, okay? We cannot, we cannot continue to criminalize people for medical conditions, okay? We are locking people up left and right nationwide, and it's not working. I was just talking with the Albany sheriff, and he was saying, he said, "This is something that we just can't lock, we can't just keep locking people up." So what we need to start with is education and awareness. And then what we need to do is start to focus on our neighborhoods and our families and remove the stigma around this so people feel comfortable reaching out to get help and kind of normalizing the fact that we, none of us can do this alone. And we do that by promoting, getting the information out there, going into the neighborhoods and meeting people where they're at. Thank you.
So let me just say, first of all, that the opioid addiction is epidemic, it's just an epidemic right now. And it's affecting all families in all neighborhoods across the country, actually. But even in our capital region, it's just not confined to one neighborhood or one specific group of people. So we, first of all, I've made sure that I educate myself on the problem because we do have programs that are coming in now where they're actually treating people. In Schenectady, programs have opened to treat people with the, with a problem with opioids. And I think we have to make sure that we educate people in the community to make, to have them better understand that it's really not people taking over the community, but what we're trying to do is heal the community. So supporting those programs that are doing that, making sure that we know where those programs are so that people that we encounter, to be able to refer those, them to those programs so that they can get the help that we need. And also, as was said, to not stigmatize it, but to recognize it is a problem that we have and a problem that we need to address.
Thank you. How do we help residents who are displaced to motels and temporary shelters because of lack of funds? We'll begin with Mr. Hafiz. Would you like me to repeat that?
Yes, please.
How do we help residents who are displaced to motels and temporary shelters because of lack of funds?
Well, first, we have to have enough affordable housing. Well, first, we have to have enough affordable housing in Schenectady. Schenectady, at this point, they don't have, there was an article the other day in the newspaper about affordable housing. For people who are getting a social security check of $700 or $800, they obviously not going to be able to afford the rent of the, an apartment in the $600 or $700 range. There has to be some other way to support people on fixed income. And the city and county and obviously the state have to be involved in programs to support low-income housing. Otherwise, we're going to have other problems. Crime will increase. We know that property taxes are a factor here in this, in this equation. We should really work on reducing property taxes in the city on these properties and have landlord, you know, opportunities in order to offer affordable housing to low-income, low-income individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farley?
Okay, so Schenectady is a place that is rich in programs, but is often, or sometimes, I should say, poor in results. We are saturated with programs to help people, but a lot of these programs are concentrated on the quick fix. What we need to do is make sustainable investments in not just infrastructure of low-income housing, but as well as educating people and providing them with economic opportunity so they can be mobile and they can, they can leave low-income housing, therefore, you know, freeing up a place for somebody else, right? We have to be thinking about how do we sustain this? Because if not, if we're just going to talk about building more and more low-income housing, well, really, that's not a sustainable plan. We need to, yes, have affordable and access to affordable housing, but we also need to concentrate on a strong, thriving economy that allows people to move up. So therefore, they're not in that need of that and they can actually start to contribute and to pull others up as well.
As I said earlier, when jobs come to Schenectady, people in Schenectady need to be able to get those jobs, those jobs that are well-paying jobs so that they can afford to live someplace and not have to move from point A to point B and sometimes end up in hotels. Some of the people I know for a fact end up in hotels, people who have low income, some people may be on assistance even. And this, to me, this speaks to another problem that we have here. The people that, when they are on assistance, as they try to improve the quality of their life by getting a job and improving their life, then you get to a certain point, a dollar over, and then you're cut off. I would propose that as you increase, they, the subsidy that you get decreases until people get to the place where they're self-sustaining and they can live in a place and not have to move and their children move because all of that impacts families. So I think that we have to figure out a way so that people can continue to, if they're getting assistance as they work to improve themselves, that they not get cut off, but that the level of assistance they get decreases until they are able to be self-sustaining so that we don't have this perpetual problem of living in hotels. Thank you.
There could be a variety of reasons why someone ends up homeless. It could be medical. It could be because they lost their job. It could be because of an abuse situation, whatever. Each individual case needs to be handled differently. And I think the resources to Schenectady, and if they're all resources for all those individual scenarios, they need to be easier to get for that individual to help them step by step by step. And depending on the situation, maybe they do need more schooling and assistance to be able to live out on their own for whatever the reason may be.
Thank you. The next question is, how would you improve equity in the city? I think that's right. We'll begin with Mr. Farley. I'll read that question again because I was a bit confused by it myself. How would you improve equity in the city?
So, so that's, that's, it's a broad question, but I, but I think how I'm understanding that is that how, how do we improve equity, maybe, and we're talking about employment and maybe we're talking about economics, I would guess? And, you know, you know, equity is the child of opportunity. So what we need to do is that we need to create more opportunities for people that live in Schenectady and be more responsive to the needs of the people that are in Schenectady. In other words, when we talk about industries just coming here, that's one thing. We need to be intentional about attracting industries that we think will thrive here, which will give us a better opportunity to achieve equity by being more inclusive and being responsive to the need and the skill sets of the people that live here in this community.
Thank you.
I feel one of the ways we, again, that we can get equity in cities is that so that people are employed. It really just boils down to people able to be self-sustaining and not consistently depending on programs, et cetera, for their, for their lives, for their lives and to support their families. So when, when businesses do come here, to be able to, people that work here, get the jobs. Even if there's a point system that says, "If you live in Schenectady, we'll hire you and you'll get an extra point over somebody if they say you're 100% qualified and you're all equal." But if you live in Schenectady and you live local, as there's, there's housing that's built around people living locally. So we should also carry that over into people, businesses wanting people that live locally, that you can walk to work, drive to, bike to work, but that you live local so that we can build up the equity in our city.
Ms. Sarone?
I'm not really sure what you mean by equity, but I'll give it a rip. I think equity, equity, I think we want to bring people into Schenectady. We want it to be a welcoming city. And in order to do that, we need to make, increase our property values and decrease our taxes and decrease our crime and make, build better communities for people to want to be here or want to stay here. We have a lot of people leaving Schenectady. We want them to stay here. I think that's what will build up our equity. Thank you.
Mr. Hafiz?
Well, I, I advocate, I've always been an advocate of neighborhood, neighborhood, different neighborhoods in Schenectady getting its, their fair share. You know, some neighborhoods are not getting their equitable share when it comes to the number of residents. An area like Mount Pleasant or a neighborhood like Mount Pleasant is getting a lot less what it deserves. It's the most populous. And if you go to Mount Pleasant, drive around Mount Pleasant and then drive around Upper Union Street, you see there's no equity there. There's no fairness. I think there should be more, more, we should be more fair in allocating funds to neighborhoods per capita because these people that live in this neighborhood, they pay the high taxes whether it's, it's in Mount Pleasant or Upper Union Street and they should get their fair share, just like, just like they did downtown, Upper Union Street and now Mohawk Harbor.
Thank you. Are there things the city can do to better modernize and maintain our infrastructure, including roads, water supply, stormwater and wastewater? I will read that again and Ms. Porterfield will be answering first. Are there things the city can do to better modernize and maintain our infrastructure? The roads, water supply, stormwater and wastewater, yeah, stormwater and wastewater.
Okay. Well, our city, yes, definitely, because a lot of what I hear from people on the doorsteps or just regularly are potholes. So yes, we do, we do need to do a better job of maintaining our, our roads. I also, let me just say that I feel that, I know that our taxes are high, but I also feel that if people get services that they feel are good for what they're paying, then they're, you know, there's not so much of a, as a complaint. There is, we are trying to build a new wastewater treatment plant to deal with that. So the city is looking at these things to improve that, recognizing that we do need some work on our infrastructure and we're working towards that. And as I said, to improve our roads, since I think it's 2014 perhaps, we've only paved 44 miles. We do need to see more improvement in that. But if you look around, you will see that work is already being done to improve what is an aging infrastructure in our city.
Thank you. Ms. Sarone?
I've seen improvements in the city and I guess they're working forward, of course. But all those things need to be included in a budget. And those are obviously capital type of expenses. I'm not aware of what kind of funding we have in that as of yet. Something worth looking into, but it's something that we always have to improve and that would have to be on top of priority. I see in most neighborhoods, the water flows a little slower, the sewers don't drain correctly. And the roads do need to be maintained. I know it's included in our taxes already. I think a lot more could be done, that our contractors, maybe not tearing a street up, I mean fixing a street and then tearing it up a week, a month, the next year.
Mr. Hafiz?
Yeah, these are obviously capital investments and the city normally would have either state funds or federal funds to improve the infrastructure. And obviously, we need additional funds. If you drive around Schenectady, you will see we need, you know, sidewalks, we need new sidewalks. I have a property on Crane Street, the sidewalks hasn't been changed in, or fixed or replaced in about 14 years. So we definitely need additional funds to do this. And since this is capital investment, we need state funds and federal funds. There's also one point when, when, when the casino came in and this Mohawk Harbor project started, the city did not require the casino developer or these developer to pay for these infrastructure costs. And they ran around, you know, asking the state for funds when they, they had the casino developer here that was, we were supposed to ask him to do and pay for the cost of the infrastructure. And that, that took away a lot of money that could be spent in other neighborhoods and improve, in improving the streets and the sidewalks there.
Thank you. Mr. Farley?
Okay, so I think that what we have to look at is, is the answer, believe me, more money pretty much can help anything, right? But we, but we have to be clear that the answer, the solution isn't always more money. And on our way to that solution, it's really about proper allocation of funds and how are we allocating the, working with the resources that we have now. As my mother used to say, "Well, we got to finish that plate before we talk about dessert," right? So I think that what we can, what we can do well is we look at the city's smart, Schenectady Smart City Initiative. And really quickly, my limited understanding of that is that there are, there's some technologies, some cameras that can actually start to pick up on trends where potholes are more prominent and things of that nature. So we can better, you know, we can kind of streamline our services, which ends up saving us money instead of the way that we're doing it now. So again, we have to be innovative in our approach and find new solutions to old problems. Thank you.
And this question will start with Ms. Sarone. If there is a need to cut budgets, where would you cut?
That's an open-ended question. I would have to actually see the budget. You can't just, you have to see it and examine it. You would have to look at each department and see what they are spending and what their actual performance is. In every department, there's, you have to department mentalize because otherwise you're not going to cut it. There are certain sections in any department within the city, I'm not sure how many there are here, but you can always do a little bit of cutback, a little bit of cutbacks in each department. We'll do an overall percentage of some sorts. I would have to see what the city's needs are and examine the budget to tell you specifically where it needs to be cut back. We'd have to be in front of it here.
Mr. Hafiz?
Well, cutting the budget, basically, anybody will look at lowering the cost of doing business, you know, in, in the ideal business world, lowering the cost will, will obviously reduce the budget. So for example, if we have some costs in finance that we, in the finance department and we ask the head of the finance to, you know, slash his budget and they usually, what they usually do is they start with the part-time employees, the poor fellows, and then they linger. It's not the preferred way, but that's what they normally do in corporate America, part-timers and, and they go down seniority. But obviously, if, there's a better way and a better approach of lowering, you know, the cost of doing business in each department.
Thank you. Mr. Farley?
Okay, so that's a tough question. And luckily, it's a question that none of us really have to answer alone, okay? When you want to talk about whether it's allocation of funds or budget cuts, we have to ask the people. That needs to come, that answer is provided by, through real, true and honest assessment and getting feedback from the residents that live in Schenectady and say, you know, where are our priorities at as a community, as a city? And then that answer will really dictate where budget cuts should be made. We also have to be innovative in leveraging our partnerships to say that if the residents of Schenectady said, "Hey, yeah, we can probably do without this or that, this thing or that in the city's budget." Then we have to be innovative and the first thing we need to do is look at our community, our nonprofit, our business partners and see what, what relationships we can leverage to kind of, you know, fill those gaps if, if we're in that situation. But if we concentrate on inclusive, a strong, thriving economy, we won't be in that situation. Either way, the people decide.
I don't think, without looking at the budget, I agree, you could just arbitrarily say, "I'll cut this department." I won't name a department because then I'll be quoted as saying I said that department. So, so you have to definitely look at the budget. Last year, our budget was 84.6 million and we were able to give a small tax decrease. So we were able to, we were able to cut in some places, but that happened as a result of taking a very comprehensive look over a number of days and weeks at the budget, which is how it's done. And I agree that participatory budgeting with the community is certainly a way that works in other communities and ways that could work here to have input from our community on what, on the services that are needed as well as maybe some things we could do without. So we would have to look at, very closely at the budget to make sure that we're not losing services. That's also extremely important, that the services that we're providing to our community aren't diminished because we made budget cuts in areas just because it was a way to save money. So yes, we want to save money, but not at the expense of our residents.
Thank you. In all the years I've been moderating, this is the first time a question has been submitted that I can answer. The candidates cannot. And the question was, where are the other candidates? The other two candidates are Karen Zaluski-Wildzilis and John Mutiverin. And the answer is, all the candidates were invited, but those missing did not respond to our invitation. So it's like you invite your friends for dinner and some just don't show up. The League of Women Voters thanks the candidates who did come this evening for making time in their busy schedules to be here and for their commitment to our city and the residents therein. Please vote November 7. Oh! Yep. Thank you. I always make a big mistake every time, just proves I'm human. Okay, I've answered my question. I have no closing statement, but our candidates do have a closing statement. And I've lost track who went first last time. So it's...
It's one minute.
One minute closing. And who was the last person to speak?
Not me.
Not it.
All right. We'll just do a reverse. So we started at this end of the table with opening statements and started at that end of the table with closing statements.
Okay. Again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and American Association of University Women for inviting me tonight. I thank all of you in the audience for coming tonight and for your very thoughtful questions. I just wanted to... Again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and American Association of University Women for inviting me tonight. I thank all of you in the audience for coming tonight and for your very thoughtful questions. I just want to reiterate that I see myself as a public servant, someone that you can reach out to and if you need assistance or have questions answered. I also, forgotten and neglected to mention that I've spent years receiving training through something called Neighbor Works America, which works in communities all over, but works at the grassroots level, and I bring that to the table as well. And regardless of who gets elected, my goal is to best serve the residents of Schenectady. I don't operate on a personal like or dislike basis. I cast my votes and my voice, opinion, and based on what I feel is in the best interest of the city's residents. So I'd like to ask for your support on November 7 to be re-elected to the city council. It would certainly be my pleasure and my honor to continue serving you as your councilwoman. Thank you.
Mr. Farley.
Okay. So I guess I'll start by saying that anyone else noticed the irony of four people seeking a political seat? We all started by saying we're not politicians. I think that that is, that's suggestive to the fact that we have lost faith in our leadership in one way or another. And the word polit, and a politician has such a negative connotation, but it doesn't have to. I want people to vote for me because I am who I say I am. And I think that as we return integrity to politics and true representation, you know, by next time someone's on the debate stage, they'll be saying, "I am a politician, and I want to be a politician because I want to be a represent of the people. And I'm somebody who will make decisions with people, not for them, and we must govern and lead out of purpose, not power." Thank you.
Okay, I, I'm advocating. I'm just going to go right to what I'm advocating for, and I'm going to read it from my sheet paper here. I'm advocating for fair, for a fair share of funds for each Schenectady neighborhood. We all know that some neighborhoods are not getting their fair share. Just drive around Mount Pleasant and Hamilton Hill and then take a ride downtown and Upper Union Street. I'm advocating for a satellite police station for each neighborhood that needs it to fight crime. I'm advocating for programs to assist property owners to stay in their homes and not lose their homes to high taxes. I'm advocating for a strategy to help landlord, not really beating on landlords, because landlords, if they are, if they're getting help, they will keep the property and they will keep their tenants in there and give them affordable housing. There's also a proposal, was the time's up? Well, anyway, I'm just going to close by saying, please, please help me get elected to council. I will, I'll be helping city resident and neighborhood get their share of funds and the quality of service that they need and achieve a better future for the city. Thank you.
I ask you for your vote. I will keep your best interests in mind, and I will welcome your ideas and concerns to make our city better. You have a choice at this election. Is it a choice to continue the way things have always been or elect leaders who can bring a fresh ideas and perspectives? After all, one-party dominance at any level is generally less desirable than healthy two-party competition. When you do have both parties involved, you open up dialogue and come up with better solutions because it forces you to debate. With a broader spectrum of city council people sharing different perspectives to enrich conversation, better solutions will generate, will be generated for our city. If elected, I promise to devote my time and talent to my position as your city council representative and make sure your issues and concerns are fully addressed. Thank you.
I would like to thank you all for putting up with my mistakes. I'm sorry. This is why I will never be asked to moderate a presidential debate. So, as I was saying before I got ahead of myself, November 7. Put it on your calendar, please. The polls are open. You know this better than I do. You guys should make this announcement. They're open from 6:00 in the morning till 9:00 in the evening.
And they're close today, right? They're close today, right?
And today, they're close. If you have any questions, call the Board of Elections. I can rattle off the number if you want me to. I don't know if you'll remember it.
411. Vote 411.
Vote 411. That would be on the computer, right? If you have a computer, put in vote 411. It's a website sponsored by the League of Women Voters, and it will give you all the information you need or the phone number to call to get the information you need. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for making this forum possible and to the support from our League volunteers. Without them, this wouldn't happen. We also thank the Schenectady County Community Public Library for allowing us to use their space, and they do this frequently, which is really rather nice. And thank you who made it a priority to be here tonight, because without you, there is no forum, and for becoming an informed voter. Remember to vote November 7 from 6:00 to 9:00. And now you can turn on your phones. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.[1772.13][1772.13][applause]